Pledge allegiance, please. Roll call over missing Commissioner Blair. Need to approve the agenda for December eleventh. Is there any additions or deletions? John. Is there? No?
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as written.
Second that.
We got a motion and a second to approve agenda as written. All in favor, just saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Pass with all present. Prove amendments for November thirteenth. Anybody has any changes or?
I'll make a motion we pass the minutes as written.
I'll second that.
We got a motion and a second to pass the minutes as written. All approve, saying by saying aye.
Aye.
Sign. Pass with all present. Notice of public hearing in the Way Park Park. Planning Commission will hold a public hearing at City Hall nineteen thirteen Avenue North, six thirty, soon thereafter, Tuesday, December eleventh, twenty eighteen, to hear the following. Request of Globe Enterprise Inc., Jim Reschenke, for the review of a planned unit development for a two-story mixed-use retail, commercial, and residential building. The property is legally described as thirty-eight A West, one hundred and thirty-two point two-five feet of east, two hundred and ninety-seven point five feet of north, one thirty-four feet of south, one sixty-seven of southeast, four southwest, four less parcel fifteen, Stearns County Highway right-of-way, plat seventeen, city of Way Park, Stearns County, Minnesota. The property is addressed at two oh five Third Street Northeast. Public hearing opened at six thirty-three.
I'm working on toggling over to the PC here. Why it's being fussy? Okay, well, I guess this is gonna be a little problematic here tonight. I'll do the best I can without attachments on screen, but this request was submitted by Mr. Rakshani, who recently purchased the property at two oh five Third Street Northeast with intent of redevelopment. He has opted, you may have noticed, to proceed with demolition of the building, even though there's nothing been approved as of yet. And he would, in any case, he would do something with the property regardless of the outcome of this request. He's been coordinating with me for the last several months on concepts for this property, and ultimately I submitted an application for the planning of development to give some flexibility from the B two commercial general business district standards that apply to it, namely regarding the provision of the residential component that's incorporated within the building. Kind of a mixed-use proposal with retail on bottom and residential on top, as well as option for either and some additional flex space on the first floor into reduce setbacks in order to essentially mirror the property that's located to the east. The concept has approximately the same footprint on the property as the building to the east does on its respective parcel. This would maintain a pretty uniform appearance for the block and maximizes the available parking, which is admittedly kind of tight for the proposal. There were a couple alternative configurations that were explored with the architect and that I, we had some input on his staff over the course of a handful of meetings. The proposed layout is submitted was deemed the most preferable. The proposed building and request would reduce the side and rear yard setbacks to five feet. The building is forty-eight by one hundred and twenty-two feet and has an overall footprint of fifty-eight hundred fifty-six square feet. Access to the property is from the western side of the parcel via new curb cut, which would be placed as far back from Third Street as possible to allow room for ingress and egress of vehicles. You may have noticed that the site plan that was submitted noted a couple parking stalls in the area of the curb cut and driveway. That was essentially an error that that was included on the finalized site plan, that those couple stalls could not be counted for parking because they would be in the way. Not counting those two stalls, the property has a total of twenty-five parking stalls available on the property. Staff recommended that the applicant explore a cross easement or potential cross easement with the adjacent property owner to the east to maximize traffic movement and parking efficiency via shared use, but thus far we haven't seen any information or indication of formal discussion with that owner. The applicant submitted a narrative outlining the details of the request, including the proposed building exterior and features of the the six single-bedroom loft apartments above. The applicant noted that, excuse me, that they've taken some inspiration from the general design of a fairly similar newer development in downtown Saint Joseph. The front of the building features covered storefront walkway, and the apartments are accessed via an interior hallway on the back or to the north side of the building with the entrance from the western side at floor level. The apartments have balcony areas facing Third Street. These are single-bedroom apartments, but they do feature a den area, kind of a bonus space, so to speak, but this would not be allowable as a bedroom due to the lack of a egress window. They could use it for a study or a rec room or something like that, though, and that's not uncommon in smaller apartments. The applicant's been advised this information, and it would be reiterated as a condition of any approval. You see, the lower level notes the four retail spaces, as well as two kind of flex spaces. The applicant's requesting some flexibility to either utilize those as retail or as two additional apartments should the market dictate. Typically, we don't allow the first-floor residential component in a mixed-use type development, but given the the, kind of the inherent design and the way that it's directed towards Third Street, in this case, I guess I wouldn't have an issue with that being allowed as apartments, provided that there no more is a single, no more than a single bedroom and essentially the same design as the ones up top. I think that would be something that if we would move forward with this, that we would see how it went if they do go that way and potentially reevaluate for any future similar request. Assuming that the two lower-level apartments will be undertaken, the parking demand of the retail portion will be twelve stalls. For the apartment units, the formal ordinance requirement is two stalls per unit, which would be a total of sixteen stalls. That combined total requirement would be twenty-eight stalls, which gets a couple stalls above the twenty-five that they have. There are a couple of factors that would be worthy of consideration, though, in this instance. The first is that the single-bedroom apartments may likely have single tenants, and single tenants have a more realistic requirement of one stall each. Not necessarily a requirement, but that could be a potential scenario there for some or all of them. The second is that, given the mixed-use nature of the development, at least during the work week, the retail parking demand is likely to be higher during the daytime, when tenants would likely be elsewhere, either at work or school or something off-site. That becomes a little more sided during the weekend, though, when you could have crossover, that the stores could be open and tenants would be more likely to be home, but it bears consideration. An additional element, again, is the future possibility of cross easement and additional parking allowance via agreement with an adjacent property owner, whether that one would be to the the property to the east with concrete image and the Kodak store, or another nearby property owner. You may recall, we allow for parking within three hundred feet, so that could always be utilized if needed. Staff is also aware that the applicant's been in some conversation, at least preliminary conversation with other adjacent property owners regarding potential future interest in their property, so that could lead to something, either further development or parking resources or both. I am supportive of the planning of development with design and layout as proposed, provided that the recommended conditions are met. This is the kind of development I think we'd like to see along Third Street, particularly on a maybe larger scale at the corner of Maple, near the mall, Maple and Tenth. This would be, on a larger scale, something that would be really perfect for that area, and I think this could be a nice jumpstart to some redevelopment and revitalization of that stretch. Before we do the public hearing, I'll go through the recommended conditions. I would recommend approval, excuse me, of the planning of development with the following conditions. One, design and configuration shall follow documents as reviewed and approved by the planning commission and city council. Minor amendments may be approved by planning and community development director. Changes or amendments deemed as major shall require additional review and/or approval by planning commission and city council. Number two, no den area as depicted in the floor plans shall, for apartments, shall be utilized as bedroom. Number three, property shall obtain and maintain rental license for rental of apartment units. Occupancy is subject to all city ordinances. Number four, applicant agrees to coordinate with adjacent property owner or owners to secure additional parking stalls per city ordinance related to parking should excessive parking demand become a concern as determined by city staff. Number five, applicant shall submit a landscaping plan for landscaping along Third Street frontage, which is subject to review and approval by city staff. Number six, applicant shall bear sole responsibility for any and all costs incurred, incurred with the relocation of utilities associated with it, including but not limited to signs, fire hydrant or hydrants, water, sewer lines, et cetera. Number seven, any signage, including any signage within or on windows, shall adhere to city standards and sign permits must be obtained prior to fabrication and installation. And lastly, number eight, exterior lighting, if any, shall follow city standards. That concludes my staff report. We can open it up for questions of myself or the applicant.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Any input from the public? Can you come up to the podium, please, and state your name and?
Any blocks or landowners just to the northwestern there? I guess my question is, you had stated that there are single-bed dwellings. Are you I don't know where you're gonna find the parking, are they gonna be able to park on the street? Will there be any parking on the street?
There can be parking on the street. You can't count that for the parking stalls.
But there can be parking, overnight parking on that.
It has to follow city.
I mean, we've lived there fifty-five years, and we've seen times when crossroads had cars up and down both sides of that street. It's virtually impossible to get through there, especially now since we've got a lot of big trucks going through there. I don't know how that's gonna work, and I don't know how you're gonna find enough parking. That is one of my concerns, and just because you call it a single-bed apartment, do you assume there'll be one occupant in that bed? That may just mean still two cars. And the businesses that are to go on the ground floor kind of like to have some idea of what they would be and what their hours would be. I think you can understand that since we've lived there for a while.
Well, as far as the parking, that's part of our request, is to reduce the parking requirements a little bit. And that's why it's considered what we call planning of development, that we can have flexibility when it's all kind of done as part of a single review. Now, as far as street parking, it is legal to park on the street, provided that that it's not during snow emergency or during the winter months when they're plowing or anything like that. But I would note that they can't block any access or anything, so if that's a concern, if that's happening, you're always welcome to bring that to the police's attention. But that parking on the street, while they can do it, that can't be counted as part of the parking requirement.
But if they can do it, you know it's gonna be done.
Yeah, and we can't necessarily stop that. As far as the occupancy, what I notice is that it's possible or potentially likely that it may be a single person in those apartments. They're not terribly big apartments. And, but that doesn't mean that it couldn't be a couple, or a couple with a young child, perhaps. I think that realistically, they'd probably gravitate to other options, because it's honestly probably pretty cramped for more than two people. But you're correct, it is, it's, there's nothing that says that you can't have two people in an apartment. And if they both have a vehicle, that's possible. But if you have, but likewise, if you have one person, they're unlikely to have more than one vehicle.
Well, that's very true.
Yep. And as far as the potential businesses, I don't have an inkling of what those businesses may be. They would have to be businesses that are allowable within the B two commercials general district. Perhaps the applicant can say if he has any idea of what they're looking at, but it would probably be in a similar vein to the other businesses in the area.
Could you help us on that?
Well, at this point, I guess we.
Jim, do you want to come up and state your name and address? Thank you.
Good evening. Name is Jim Rakshani. I guess at this point, we really, we have already talked with some medical field, which is perhaps, it's not at this point a hundred percent, but we're trying to get someone that probably take the entire lower level as opposed to three or four stalls together, so to minimize the possibility of having too many cars or too many.
That would certainly help, and I guess we're a bit concerned with ours. I mean, you know, ten, eleven o'clock, fine, but two o'clock, you're going to, I just assume I see a bar.
That's understandable, but I guess our intention is these are a little kind of higher-end lofts, so to the contrary, there might be some people with no cars, because some of these people are managers of the mall, that work at the mall, perhaps just walking to the walking distance, so there might be some of those professionals with no vehicle as well, but as John referred to it, the hope is that we're talking about the one vehicle. And the businesses close at five o'clock, so those businesses are no longer gonna be, I guess, be gone, so it just hark a tale, but you know, you won't balance that, I guess that's our hope is.
Sir, could, sir, would you mind coming up to the podium if there's gonna be kind of an ongoing conversation? It's, we record these meetings, and we need to be able to transcribe them later.
Does the city realize how much traffic goes up and down that street?
We know it's, it's a, you know, pretty well-traveled, and that's part of the reason why we're trying to push, as part of the recommendation, the curb cut as far north as we can get to allow at least a little bit of space to people to come in and go out.
Because there's a lot of traffic there, and and is there gonna be access to, when you come up to the stop sign, to the signal lights, to look left and see what's coming? You're not gonna be, you know, how close are you going to be from Third Street? I didn't quite, I didn't quite understand you if you did say.
Do you mean the curb cut, or?
How far is the building gonna be from Third Street?
Well, just to give a rough idea, it's gonna be about even with the next-door building.
Oh, really?
Yes.
You gonna park in front then?
Even with the.
The parking will be up.
The parking is in front.
Got everything backwards then. Thank you.
And I would note that, depending on what kind of business the applicant would be looking at, it is possible that it may be something that falls into what we call a conditional use permit, in which case you may see another request in the future, because those have to go through a separate review and approval, same as this. So if this were to move forward, and if the type of business that's going in there is considered a conditional use, of which we have a number that are, that have to go through that process to allow us to review them more thoroughly, kind of what we're doing here, and put additional conditions, specific conditions of approval on them, if it's something that has a higher traffic demand, a higher hours, or a lot of people that come to it. Those types of uses, we sometimes treat as conditional uses, so it is possible that something would have to come back and get further reviewed. But to be honest with a development like this, usually the developers don't know what the tenants will be, because they, the tenants won't sign on until they have a building that's been approved and they know is going to happen.
John, you said the footprint of the building is similar to the one on the block next to it.
Yes.
Size-wise, it's pretty similar size?
Yep, they've done that intentionally to kind of mirror that.
Okay, what is their situation as far as parking on their lot?
I would say they probably have roughly the same amount of parking, just, I don't have a firm count, but they wouldn't have a second story to contend with either, so their parking count is probably, their requirement is probably around twelve stalls, give or take. But their availability is probably somewhere in the realm of twenty-five to twenty-seven.
They have over-adequate numbers for what their business is.
Yes, and that's part of why we recommended that they explore a cross easement. Usually, when there's, I shouldn't say usually, but often when there's nearby commercial uses that that kind of informally share parking, they do that through an easement and formalize it. That would actually, if they were to agree to it with a neighbor, they could, they could remove like the any sort of a median in the middle and have kind of free flow between them, and then it just kind of balances out. If the parking for, if there's a salon there, like a concrete image, if their parking is high for some reason, then they can park in each other's properties, and that's pretty common. But that's, there's no requirement for anyone to enter into that. That's totally at their, at their own discretion. The only thing that could make it a requirement is if it's something that either the planning commission or the city council says that they want to be sure that they have, that they meet the absolute demand of both properties, and that could be a condition where you have to document it, and if the way to do that is to you have to provide proof of an easement, if that's the only way to get it, that could be required.
That was my, that was my concern at this. Is that something that needs to be explored as a prerequisite to the approval of this? I mean, is that what the city should be looking at, that there is a cross easement, should it be needed?
I don't, I guess in this instance, I'm, I felt that the three-stall difference is I shouldn't say small enough, but small enough, that I would honestly like to try this out and see how it goes, because we're gonna run into other situations where we have small parcels and if redevelopment comes up, we if there is a parking issue, you know, I have it written in the conditions that we could try to address it the best we can with requiring some additional parking be secured off, you know, maybe off-site. It's not an ideal solution, but it would be enough to make it work. But I'm viewing this property, this request, as a little bit of a testbed for anything in the future. Realistically, if we need to up or down the parking count, see how it goes.
Okay, thank you.
John, I have a question. That side of the, that end of the block, western of the block has the right turn lane. And also on the north side of the Third Street, there is no sidewalk. If pedestrian traffic picks up, they put a sidewalk alongside there, you're gonna wipe out the whole Third Street side of parking. Because if you look at the picture that they submitted, the white, the parking or the right turn lane is almost halfway through the cars to begin with, without even putting a sidewalk in. And if the building's the same distance in the one picture, it looks like it sticks out a little bit further. Not much, but that could be the balcony sticking out. That lot, if you drive in and try to turn around, it's really tight far as lengthwise. Cars park both sides.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's any dispute that it's pretty snug, as far as a sidewalk is is concerned, I'm not sure honestly how a turn lane impacts a sidewalk design, whether they just kind of skip past it. We, that's something we could look into, but I honestly don't have enough background in the sidewalk component as to whether they would forcibly have it be put in and take the parking out, especially if it's under the jurisdiction of Stearns County there. But that's something we can look into ahead of a council meeting, but it's a good point. That did not come up during our review with our city engineer, because we did have some questions as to whether a Third Street there being under county control would have any impact on this, and basically is, unless you're asking for a curb cut off of it, which they would never grant, then it probably has little bearing, but the sidewalk aspect didn't come up at all.
It is a public hearing. Anybody else have any comments they'd like to make, or?
I move we close the public hearing.
I got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, saying by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll pull the same side. Public hearing closed at six fifty-eight. Commissioners, I guess my concern would be how tight the parking lot would end up if the building's the same size. And, I mean, if, looking at the picture, you look at that little cement path that's along Third Street, it isn't a sidewalk to begin with. It's pretty small. And I remember when they built that building, Third Street was a lot smaller. There used to be a ditch. And the parking lot was a lot bigger. They made the parking lot smaller when they widened Third Street. I don't think they planned on that when they built the building, but they had to deal with it. I'm afraid if we build a building there with the right turn lane, if they want to do sidewalk or anything like that, we're gonna have a mess to deal with, that we don't have room to put anything. And like you said, this is a trial thing or whatever, but it's pretty expensive to build a building and say, you gotta move it ten feet back. They can't. I think we need to plan for it as if they possibly would with apartments down the road and as people ride more bikes or whatever, they ride on the sidewalk or that, but there is no sidewalk on the north side. And may or may never get it, but.
I think that's something that would be best if. I think that's something that would be best if, if staff had the, the ability to take that up with the, with the county to see what their, what their outlook on it is. And what their, what their methodology is as well. I mean, I, I don't wanna speak on it because I'm, I'm honestly not familiar enough with it, and I don't wanna venture a guess that's wrong.
But even that lot that's there now to the east, when they plow Third Street, it's plowed right into that parking lot. There's no place to pile snow on the sides. Any more, other commissioners having questions or concerns?
And that, that's a really valid point, that's, that's a, a big point, it's a, it's quite a stick. Um so yeah, what do we do, I mean, look at this other ones and right, there are no other sidewalks there except for that other half of that block.
That's not even a sidewalk.
Right, it's just kinda there.
John, would we have time to table it to get more information from the county and see if there's a way to get more room out front?
Yep, you could recommend it to table. I mean, that, we would have to ex- probably extend the review period, but we've done that before. I, I don't know if it impacts the applicant's timetable at all, but there's no issue for doing it from our perspective.
Plan as a whole, I, I don't have a problem with. It's well thought out.
Well, retail was on the floor and apartments up front, down by shortstop, they have it, it works very well. Utilize the space, but it's just, it's so tight.
Pretty tight.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, if you're more comfortable tabling it, I don't have an issue with that, I certainly don't. And we can revisit some of these questions and maybe explore whether a, a cross easement is a realistic option as well because that would take some pressure off.
Is it ultimately up to uh Mr. Refine? Up to, ultimately up to him to do that, to make that decision to table or not?
It's ours if we wanna table. Would it interrupt your time flying along ways or?
I, I guess I'm not sure what, how that gonna affect the uh, we're hoping if all goes well, uh early spring of uh breaking ground, so.
We would, uh Jim, we would bring it back uh basically in, at this same meeting in January, just out a month.
As long as it works out with your timetable, I guess.
Yeah, we, we wouldn't, it, that wouldn't necessarily make a, a huge impact on your timeline is, with, with spring down the line. And, and again, you also have to, um I didn't note this for, for the planning commission, but this property needs to be platted as well. So that's gonna be a second action that, that we're gonna have to look at. And you could do that at the same time, whether you want to or not, it's up to you. But it's, it, it wouldn't really impact our, our timeline.
Alright, I guess.
Have you had any discussions about the cross easement?
No, I, I just had a meeting with uh Byron and uh, and Bruce just this evening. So uh we're gonna go forward, we'll continue our discussion.
Okay.
So, yeah, they, they're very cooperative, they're, there seems to be, so. And I, I, I looked at, at that parking lot uh different times a day. There're probably three, three quarter of the parking is vacant most of the time. They're parking.
I'm worried about the right turn lane really cuts into that property that you have.
It does, I think the city, you know, they're giving the right couple of years ago, so it's the right turn.
Parking is always delicate because we, we have to plan for the peak and not the, not the norm.
Also the future.
No, I think it's a good point and uh I think it is a smart idea at this point in time to table it until we can get more information and.
I'd need a motion to table it, wouldn't I?
Still moved. Still moved.
I got a motion.
Table it, table it for one month.
I got a motion and a second to table it for a month, all in favor, single by saying aye?
Aye.
I'll pull the same side. It's tabled for till next meeting.
Eighth of January?
Is it what, the eighth of January, Bob asked?
Uh, I believe so.
New Year's Day is a, is a Tuesday, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, then we're, we're looking at the eighth. I've gotta get my handy dandy calendar up and running for the next year's dates.
And, and I would say it, it might be best to advise him.
Yep, eighth. It is the eighth.
Yeah, John's been talking to him about it, so.
I'm sorry, sir, the public hearing is closed, but you're welcome to stick around to the end if you'd like.
Okay, notice of public hearing, the Way Park Planning Commission held a public hearing at City Hall nineteen thirteen Avenue North. Six thirty, soon thereafter on Tuesday, December eleventh, they hear the following request. The request of the city of Way Park to amend ordinance section fifty-two dot one-one A-one agricultural residential district subdivisions four or five related to conditional and interim use and establish ordinance fifty-two, section fifty-six of zoning solar and wind electric generating facility, facilities regulations. Public hearing opened at seven oh six.
Uh planning commission members, uh I'll give the, the overview here, I won't go through the entire ordinance because it's um be a long time to, to read and I'll trust that you've all had an opportunity to, to kinda review and collect your thoughts on it. Uh but essentially the background on this, and, and you're familiar that we've seen a number of requests for the, the large scale solar facilities within, within the, the city of Way Park, particularly within the A-one uh ag rural residential areas outlying uh on the, the western area of the city. Uh last year, or excuse me, earlier this year, we established a moratorium for a period of twelve months in uh last February to allow staff to review the time, or time to review additional uh potential regulation on such facilities. In staff's opinion, the existing ordinance does not perform adequately for review or consideration of, of these facilities as it was created before they were being built and utilized within, within the area. The facilities that we do have that, minus the one that was approved when it was still in the township and, and kinda outside of our um control. They've been considered via uh a previous interpretation under the allowance for cen- essential public utilities as a conditional use. Uh in that they're affiliated with public, public utility energy providers. But given the further consideration and the, that these are actually privately owned and for-profit nature that work in partnership with the public utilities, um this interpretation in hindsight is, was incorrect, um in my opinion. And to be perfectly honest and forthright, this is my number one regret, that I did not look into this ordinance and get something started day one when I started. Because I, I did not, um I knew that there was some interest, but I did not foresee the, the amount of demand that was um gonna be cre- um created on the western area there. You know, it's all relating to the substation. Uh everybody wants to be near that substation and it's putting a lot of, a lot of pressure on the land in that area and it's um creating quite, quite a bit of strife with some of the, the residential homes in that area that they haven't always made themselves heard at, at the public hearings, but I get a lot of calls on it. Uh I would note that initial conversations between staff and some of the early uh solar project developers noted that given the electrical infrastructure capacity in that area, uh they felt that there would be enough capacity for maybe two facilities and uh that didn't turn out to be the case, given the, the rapid development and the noted interest from other solar developers and interested property owners who stand to benefit from the lease agreements. And the, the conduct I referenced with the concerned residents who don't often speak up too much because there's, they don't wanna have any bad blood with the neighbors that they've been next to for many years. It was determined that updating the ordinance was the, the most appropriate step. There's a concern amongst myself, uh ci- city staff and the city council as well that uh the development of these facilities is uh potentially jeopardizing long-term land use and uh growth opportunities and as well as impacting quality of life of residents in the areas that are um nearby to them. And I will say that uh I get calls at least a couple of times a month um from the solar developers and, and people that are interested. So the, the demand is still out there, there's no doubt about that. In the past months, staff has reviewed several options and uh existing ordinances for elements that could benefit from inclusion and updated ordinance. Uh including the provisions overseeing uh some development of, of wind-driven facilities, which we've not seen any interest in. But I felt it was best to try and address them at the same time. I did find that uh one of our neighboring communities, Soc Rapids utilizes a uh concise, well-designed ordinance that was adopted in twenty seventeen and um I uh utilize much of the same language in uh proposing our, or an ordinance for us specifically dealing with solar and adding the, the wind-driven elements uh in place.
Is this car- pretty much carbon copy of theirs?
Uh it's, it's fairly close, they don't incorporate anything having to do with wind. And I um uh bulked up the setback requirements a little bit based on what we have already. Theirs is a little bit different in that it was done uh between the, basically as part of the, what, what's their um kinda joint planning arrangement for the annexation area. And theirs actually requires that any facilities must be at least one mile from, from city limits. But it allows for, for similar type developments, that they have to be at least a mile away from city limits. So they don't allow any additional um in city limits as far as I can tell. I don't know if they have the, the same demand that, that we're seeing either though. Any, the first element is that um as well as the solar, the specific solar, wind uh facility draft you see, it also incorporates updates to the A-one district, which would establish wind facilities as a conditional use permit and solar facilities as a proper interim use permit, which is just kinda how we've been treating them with the timelines. But um through the conditional use permit process, which really isn't ideal, but was what we thought we could kinda make do with. Factoring we would really only see one or two, but um it's gotten to an uncomfortable level with the amount we're seeing to keep treating them that way. Uh any such proposed facilities would have to follow the guidelines and review standards established by the new ordinance section. Fairly similar to how submittals for antenna towers must follow uh their respective criteria within the ordinance. Uh most notably, the proposed ordinance sets a significant distance requirement between facilities, including existing facilities, which will create a, kind of a natural limit as to how many facilities can be located throughout the city. Additional requirements guide um, guide these facilities to lowland or wetland areas that are not considered prime agricultural or a potential development land, as may be allowed per Wetland Conservation Act standards and overseen by Stearns County. And incorporate more significant analysis elements for review and consideration. Uh as far as kinda guiding things into the lowland, you may recall um the, the project that was across several properties, the Blonigans, Belclair and a portion of the Hell property. When all was said and done, we, we kinda worked with them to guide at least a, a pretty sizable portion of that into the lowland area, which um worked out fairly well in that circumstance and away from, from Highway twenty-three as best we could get it. So that, that sort of arrangement is something that was factored in here. Uh specific regulations regarding decommissioning in a minimum bond or other financial security amount of five hundred thousand and hires may be deemed appropriate as set via the proposed ordinance, ordinance to ensure removal of the project at the end of the interim use permit or abandonment of the project. And just to clarify, if you look at the language, it, it's not that we immediately pull on the bond at, at the end of that. We, that would only, only be utilized in, in the instance that we notify them that their, their term is up and it's time to decommission and and if they don't follow through on that, it's an option we'd have at our disposal and not that it would be the first line to be used, but one more tool in the box that we could lean on if we had to. After the review of the city council on some of the um, the previous projects, they're pretty ardent that they, they want that high bond amount to ensure that, that the city isn't gonna be left with a, a big bill if, if for some reason one of these projects is abandoned or um, or winds up in some sort of dispute as to who's responsible for it. And that amount admittedly is high, but um we're not the first ones to use that high of an amount either. There, there was precedent for that, that's been, that was set elsewhere in the state. Uh staff is supportive of the proposed ordinance updates and establishment of the, the new facility ordinance. And the uh proposed tax amendments in uh the ag rural residential district related to the conditional use permits and interim uses. I would note that uh we did uh have a, a phone call today and a, some uh, from a solar outfit in the, the Twin Cities, I believe it was, that um caught wind of the, the proposal and wanted to chat about it and we spoke for maybe ten or fifteen minutes about the updates. And he asked us some, if he could submit some, some details or concerns and I told him, yes, you can. I couldn't get it in the packet by that time, but that I'd make it available to you in the city council. So that's, that was included on, at your uh stations for tonight's meeting.
Is there anything that you wanna address in this?
I, I guess I would note that they, they reference that the new facilities that are being considered from here on out are uh basically one megawatt facilities and that they have concerns with the, with the, the high bond amount. I guess I don't, I don't have a concern with the, the high bond amount. I, I would be concerned that the regulations keep kinda shifting on these projects and uh it's kind of a moving target, to be honest, to keep, to keep up with them. I, I would be concerned that instead of having one, a single one megawatt project that you have what you have on some kinda sidestepping of the regulations and you get a number of one megawatt projects that are daisy chained together to create a larger project. And that, that would be kind of an end run around the, the intent behind that, so. I know it's a high amount, I told him the same thing, but we're, we're looking out for ourselves more, more than anything because we're frankly, we're, we're seeing demand that, that other communities aren't seeing. And that's, that's just the reality of it and, and we're trying to safeguard ourselves.
Do you have any, any idea why we're seeing demand that other cities aren't seeing?
It's, it's the substation that's located on Colony Road one thirty-eight. That's just down from the, the Stern center.
That's not the demand of the people who are into, that's the demand of the power company. They want them located within close proximity of the substation. They won't take anything out yonder.
Yeah, the, the whole relationship between the, the Excel and the, the solar companies becomes a little fuzzy at times and, and each kinda has their respective take on things, but I, I do know that the substation is pretty critical to their, to their needs and that's, that's become the catalyst that's driven the request here. Because everything's been centered around that area, we, we've never seen a request for anything further out, even though it could, it could technically be possible, it's just probably, you know, either Excel doesn't want them that far away or it's more costly, costly to, to connect at that distance or both.
Just that inner fee probably be set at one hundred thousand dollars per megawatt.
But you know, I, you know, when I opened this, first of all, you know, we've, we've um addressed these issues before. And uh, and something is bothering me and, and I don't know if I can pinpoint it, other than, well, I'll just go on to the next point and whatever. When I opened the packet, I thought, why are we doing this, you know? Uh you know, there's a lot of issues, you've received phone calls, these things, you know, can be a nightmare. You know, I'm, believe me, I'm, I'm strongly supportive of alternative energy sources. However, what I, what I, when I'm not, what I'm not educated about is what's the future? I mean, you know, this is uh twenty, twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen. Ten years from now, is there going to be a different type of source, uh of an alternative energy source? Don't know what, I have no idea what it could be. And uh you know, technology is changing every day and very quickly. Uh I I I just um, I I guess I would need to hear or like to hear um support evidence uh uh for the viability of these uh solar farms. You know, I know we've got all kinds of testimonials about, you know, how they've worked and so on. But you know, are they going to be equally as, I know the lease was what, twenty-five years that?
Yep, they have twenty-five years, usually with a year decommissioning at the end.
Yes, um. Is it going to be something, well, even in twenty-five years, uh you know, will this technology still be viable?
Uh that's part of the concern we've had as well at a staff level because they frankly, and it's not just these solar facilities, it's it's any type of of burgeoning thing that that comes up faster than than we're able to really get a handle on it. You may recall last year, we kind of struggled with the the solar, or excuse me, the small-scale antenna stuff before it was ultimately the state said, you have to allow it and that's it. But uh we don't know what's what's going to happen in twenty-five years and and they do say that that twenty-five years leaves you a lot of time to develop land in between here and there and and that's true, but but when you look at how rapidly things can happen twenty-five years, it's it's a long time, but it can go quick too, and all of a sudden, we're we're kind of stuck with with things that we have to work around or that people may not want to be near and I I don't, I don't want to um, I want to emphasize that this isn't solely a staff or city council or planning issue because I can't stress enough that that the calls I get from residents that that are concerned because they they understand that they're not necessarily a bad thing, but they worry about their their resale value or is anyone going to want to buy their house or am I going to get glare off these things? You've heard some of these a little bit from some of the past requests, but they they're hesitant to come to meetings, they they don't want to make written comments because they don't want to shake the foundations of the relationships they built with the neighbors that some of them are putting these things up or or get a pretty good deal from the solar companies. And the solar, the solar folks have been by and large pretty decent to work with, but they're they're out to make money and that's their number one prerogative and the the sometimes the the long-term goal of the of, you know, looking at the long-term growth of the city and long-term viability of of livability is is not not under their
Right, in my, in my experience with um businesses in general, they they are in business to survive. And they will do anything necessary to protect, to guarantee their survival. Even, you know, to the point of interpreting regulations uh that benefit them and not 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 the public. And I don't, I I don't want to say that as a damning statement, but it's that that's what I see as reality. And uh so, you know, we're, I I'm very uncomfortable allowing these kinds of developments that were, it's kind of a shot in the dark is 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 I'm looking at it.
But you got to look at the other side of it too, Jeff.
Yeah, go ahead.
Our companies are mandated by the government that by twenty thirty, they have to have twenty-five or thirty percent green energy. What are they supposed to do? Start of putting solar panels on every roof, on every business and so on and so forth, they don't have a choice.
I think ultimately we'll see, we'll see one of two things if if that's, you know, that being their mandate. Number one, it'll get, it'll get handed down and is it either a state or federal mandate, under which we'll have no control. And at that time, we'll we'll change our ordinances accordingly. Or number two, I think, I think we've we've seen our kind of our fair share as a as a community on some of these, on some of these aspects and I I really think that they are more designed to be located in in typically more what would be a township or more rural area and not within a an uh established city, granted that the the areas they're looking at do have the the look and feel and kind of appeal of a township, but they are within the city. Even the the taxes that are collected off of them, eighty percent go to this this county and we get the remaining twenty percent based on the kilowatt hours that they that they um report on, so that's, that gives you kind of a clear indication that that they were kind of set up with a rural
Okay, can I be the black sheep here again? I think I'm going to be tonight. The Wade Park wanted to add to its area. So they annex rural areas. Where are these being set up? In the rural areas. That's where you're saying you want them. I guess and here I'm going to go out and live again because I think I'm going to be the only man here standing, but this ordinance, you could just as well say we're going to ban solar and wind energy in the city of Wade Park. Because you're in effect doing it. If you're going to have these these solar gardens with a with a berm in front of them or a a trees and so on and so forth to protect them, why do they have to be thirteen hundred and twenty feet from a roadway? If they're sheltered and they can't be seen, which so far those aren't. But if according to this ordinance, you want to have them sheltered so they can't be seen, why do they have to be a quarter mile off the roadway? And why do they have to be three-quarters of a mile from another one? If indeed they're sheltered properly, what's the need for them? If they can't be seen, what the heck is the difference? I, to me, when I read this thing, and and correct me if I'm wrong, but are you saying wind generators can't be more than fifty feet tall?
That's correct.
Well, that, then they're useless, they can't be.
The the intent was to allow for uh kind of an individual wind turbine, not not to have a commercial wind turbine farm, but if you want to have your own.
No, no, but if you want to have even a a personal wind farm, you can't do it on fifty feet. You you can't put up a turbine that's going to generate power less than fifty feet tall, I mean, that that eliminates wind turbines. This this ordinance, the way it's written, to me, is uh you could just as well put out an ordinance that we will not allow wind or solar energy in in the city, that's what this is doing. It's precluding it. I I really have a problem with this. And I think there is merit, I hope you people have time to read this, there is a lot of merit in what's being said here. I think this is an attempt to, it it's overkill in an attempt to get back at what we already have and regret. But that was due diligence was not done, I guess. But the other thing, I have trouble with the one that's going in right by Belclair right now. We were told that each one was be seven to eight acres. That one on Belclair, I'll guarantee you that field is twenty-two acres. And that, there's two-thirds of it covered, that's way more than seven or eight acres. Somebody should be looking at that. That, we were told at this meeting, seven to eight acres each parcel. That one is a lot more than seven acres. But I don't know, I I I really struggle with this, the way it's written. It uh, we could just as well, you know, not bother with the ordinance, just say uh they're banned in the city. Because that's what this is doing, I think. I think it's overkill, but that's my opinion.
So um what, what what would be the advantage of um more solar farms to the city? Not really, not a lot, is that correct? Do you agree? I mean, I'm asking questions, I don't have an opinion here.
No. It, but is it our, is it our responsibility to help with generating green energy? That's
Well, when you look at it, look at it this way, it's, the advantage is to to the public and that's what we're looking at here. And it's about offsetting costs. Um this is something that we've been doing for, I've been a couple of years now on Stearns County, we're doing more and more of these projects, they're the design and and the impact and all that stuff, they're they're really streamlining it, they're nailing it down, making it easier and 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 not so long-lasting an impact, it's it's looked at as an agricultural endeavor. Um so you can put it on ag land. As as far as the logistics of a fifty-foot wind tower, I I don't know. I don't know if I can contest or believe what you say about that because we don't have any figures to to prove one way or the other. I don't think wind is really a big issue here, but these solar farms I don't, I don't believe that this is going to make them unusable or or um, I I I don't, I don't agree with that assessment. I think that where where we can and and how we can is becoming easier and more economical and and more streamlined and and it's a viable and feasible approach to the future for the community, not just for the city, but the city is the community.
You know, and I I I agree with that. So what, how do we handle um the complaints, the questions, or the complaints, let's see that, you know, the negative feedback that that the staff is receiving?
Well, when you look at things like when we talk about putting berms up or tree lines, um things like that, or fence lines and tree lines, sure, make them less visible. And and I even some of the newer ones now, they they do not reflect, there are some that move with the sun, there are some that stay stationary. And so that, they're they're trying to eliminate and make as as few instances of invasion as possible.
So, I mean, should that, some of those points be maybe be reflected in the ordinance?
Well, some, some of them are and that was
I mean, I've read it, but I
That was the rational rationale but in requiring kind of a glare analysis because that's come up pretty consistently as when we have applications, so we've never had anything we've never had any guidelines to review anything by, we've done kind of the best we could do on the fly because the ordinance never treated them very well.
And can the ordinance, I mean, obviously it can, but I mean, is this something that we need to be constantly aware of and update as necessary?
Likely, meaning every few years because of the, like I said, I with the mandates that 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 Mr. Zabinski brought up, we may very well hand it, have it handed down to us at some point that says this is what you're going to do. And you don't have a say, you can require permits, you can make them go through a process, but you're going to allow it and that's under the current administration, I don't know, but I don't know what the future holds either.
Current administration is more limited than the twenty-five-year.
I I think that the main concern is is that we've, it it happened maybe too quickly and too much and too, kind of too focused on an area. And the intent isn't that that they would be totally go away, but but to, you know, kind of guide any remainders that that could come in to to more spread-out areas. And maybe, Bob, you might be right, maybe that those, some of those factors are overkill if they're that far away, but I'm I'm trying, I was kind of borrowing language from a couple of different factors rather than reinvent the wheel because it's it it it, sometimes it bears some benefit to have ordinances that are kind of consistent from area to area that were not wildly different.
Have you, do you have an indication as to where other staff members along with the council is, I guess you both are supportive of the ordinance?
I I think that generally, they're they're probably supportive of it. I can't speak for them, but
I understand.
I I know that they've expressed some reservations in the past.
For me, I guess, having read the ordinance, um it does modify some of the concerns that I have. And um, you know, I agree that we we do need to serve the public. And my, but my questions are still there with regard to, you know, the future. So, you know, maybe this is a uh an adequate beginning for for what we can be doing as we move forward and as we you know, watch change happen, particularly with these kinds of uh the technology involved with 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 these types of developments and uh just keep up to date with it.
And Bob, as far as the the wind turbine, I don't have a problem going back and, you know, reviewing kind of what's out there, I I just kind of set an arbitrary height that seemed reasonable, but you're right, maybe it's maybe it's a hundred and fifty versus fifty.
Yeah, I I think that's And they are different things.
Yeah, and what I, what I was kind of referencing was some of the ones I've seen that are kind of very small scale, but those are kind of more literally backyard-type installations rather than something large, so maybe you treat it as something more like a antenna tower where it's a, you know, a hundred to a hundred and fifty foot is passable, you know, especially in that, in the ag area, given the the distances involved and the setbacks that are set in the ordinance that I don't think that's, that's a bad thing, it's like, I honestly, I just kind of, kind of reviewed some of what I had seen out there and I selected one of the heights and I, I have no problem modifying that. So I don't want to see something come back right away and says, oh, I, I'd like to do this hundred twenty-five-foot wind turbine and now I can't under the ordinance, what do I do?
Well, and I appreciate the fact that you're thinking about encouraging uh personal use, basically.
Yeah, we did, we didn't want to write that out at all and and we've, we've always allowed you know, if you want to put up the the facilities for your own use, uh I I've seen some farms in my hometown area that have some solar panels that they that they draw for themselves and you know, with with the note that that goes back to the utility, the the overage. And some have backyard ones and and then some have rooftop ones and we have a few businesses in town that have rooftop, that's, that's fine. We've never wanted to to get away from that, it's just the the large-scale kind of commercial installations.
We're pondering on what to do, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
We don't have a lot of public here, do we?
I'll I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Yeah, a motion to second to close the public hearing, only favor sing with saying aye.
Aye.
Public hearing closed at seven thirty-eight with all present. Thank you. I'm just trying to keep up with everything.
Well, we got kind of a a lot of different opinions on this. And personally, I think this might be something that we should maybe look at tabling and putting together some more ideas as far as how this should be written and done. You know, is it, is it way out here or is it somewhere in the ballpark? And
First of all, have you had any more applications or any more interest coming into the city as far as erecting any?
There is interest. We've had at least um, at least two that are within this same area, two separate properties, two separate developers, kind of unknown to each other as far as I'm, as far as I'm aware.
Just for reference, I can't, I can't put any in where I am at, so we're free from there, I'm in RIA territory. They won't do it.
Well, you have a moratorium still on, right?
It it runs through, I don't recall the It it runs through, I don't recall the exact date, but it's
Well, it's, I thought it said February.
It's still in fact, it's it's towards the later end of February.
So?
We could, we could potentially bring it back in January, but then we'd be kind of pressed to, um, to act on it one way or another and get it to the council in in early February, which is possible.
Well, according to, um, ordinance makes this pretty restrictive on new developments. Uh, so maybe approving the ordinance, uh, would be, uh, an option that we could take or, you know, and then, as I say, continue to study and get updates and and make revisions as as we get information, valuable information.
Yeah. Something in place by a certain time, we can do that and then, and then review it.
Usually what we, what I've typically done is this is one that's likely to maybe be revisited in the future. Signs is something I I look at every couple of years. I don't, I don't do it every time someone asks because otherwise that's all we'd be doing. But as far as looking at, you know, formal ordinance updates or stuff like that, I'm willing to do it, you know, every, every few years and just kind of keep an eye on things if if circumstances dictate. But we could usually get a feel for how things are going by, based on inquiries or contacts.
Now, the, the point was made that companies are in business to make money. This guy is an energy company, wanting to make money. And and yes, this is his opinion, and of course, he's, he's coming down pretty hard and and saying, well, everything is, oh, my God.
That's right.
And yeah, this is a worst case scenario. So we have to take this to kind of, you know, okay, but let's take it into the argument and and the discussion, but but I, you know, he's got his angle too, so.
Right, no, I agree, yeah.
You have to realize, these, these companies are in business to make money. And the landowner is gonna make good money off of it. So you've got a, you've got a two edged sword there, you've got two people that are, that are, are standing to make a good situation for themselves and the city's in the middle, I mean, obviously.
And also, you know, the landowner and the developer, the solar developer, um, will both make some, some money. In the meantime, we've got neighbors, uh, but potential number of, you know, lots of neighbors that may be upset. The potential of, uh, of, uh, people not wanting to move into an area because of the, uh, you know, the eyesores of the solar farm or, you know, or develop in that area. So, you know, it's, it's a complex question.
Where my concern is, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, um, where my concern is is that there's, I don't know what the future holds.
That's
And I don't know if 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 someone wants to go out there, if if they're gonna care if there's a, one of these big facilities. They they might, they might not, I just don't know.
As, as I
I don't know if there's, like, you have the, some landlords down there that are marketing their property as a residential project. Are they gonna be concerned if there's one that goes in? If there's a facility goes in before that happens? Is that gonna derail something else? And honestly, that, that, the development and the long term kind of getting along of everybody in the area is is where our stake is. We, the city's not gonna make a bunch of money off these things going in, which I think has been a little bit misled by some of these companies to this, this areas where they go. Unless you're the county or you're where you stand to benefit, but the city will get a, I mean, a couple thousand dollars from each facility that we, that we have, but it's not enough to, to to really make a dent in a city's overall budget.
You might have to add the staff just to handle the complaint.
Yeah, I I I think that that, that the, the tax, the tax aspect has been overplayed pretty significantly by some folks. But it's just, the, the, anything that that comes up so fast and with such demand is, is wanting me to take pause, and again, this is my absolute biggest regret is that I didn't tackle this on day one. And ironically, uh, I responded to a request from Bill Barber years ago before I was ever here, when he worked here. And he was asking for information on how different cities were handling solar projects. And in my previous position, I I outlined to him on how how things were being handled in in my previous city, was just some background information. So, I mean, that gives you an idea that that was, it was on his radar at the time, but it was kind of in that transition and I wish it would have stuck on mine when I started.
Well, it's done and, you know, you've, you know, you've, you know, I mean, we're, you've got us on the right track. So, um, we just need to move forward, um, with this and and so I, you know, do we want to? I mean, if this ordinance is as if, you know, I I know this, this letter is one person's view. But if it is that restrictive, you know, too bad.
Well, part of that too is, given the ordinance the way it is right now, and you still have two different companies that are looking to do something, it's obviously not way far out. You know, because they're still looking at this, if it's viable for them to
Even with this
Do it and pay it.
Right, the way it is
And make a buck.
The, the, but, um, my point, I mean, my question is, this ordinance is not in effect right now?
No, it's not, the, the folks, we, most, almost everybody I I speak with is aware that that we're under a moratorium and that there's, that there's been interest in in updating the ordinance. And when the information I've had is, I've had available, I've shared with them which way I'm, I've been leaning to going. I mean, I haven't been hiding any of that, but, um, and, but it's, there's, there's people out there and they're knocking on doors and they're seeing, they're seeing who's interested. And that's, you know, I I don't know unless we enact something that, where where that upper limit is.
Yeah, I mean, I, this is a personal story. Last year, I guess it was, somebody came and knocked on our door and we're, they were selling home security systems. And, uh, I was at the door with the guy, I was trying to get rid of him, and then he said something about they have a personal safety alert, you know? And so my wife heard that and she was very interested, well, uh, we, we ordered it and they came and installed it. And then we did a bunch of checking, uh, we checked with the Better Business Bureau, we checked with some other people and found out that this company was not what it said it was to be. And so we had them, we had them cancel it, but he said, then they, they said, well, you've signed a contract and, you know, uh, said, well, you know, how do you want to deal with this? Do you want us to go to the, um, Attorney General's office or, you know, you know, do you just want to, you know, start over here and then take out, take out the system? They took out the system, um, but my, what I'm, all this is to say, to say that, you know, it's very easy to sell people on a great idea, uh, that you're going to get X thousands of dollars for, you know, for this portion of your land. And you're gonna be doing all these wonderful things for the public. And, uh, you know, uh, and we've got this twenty-five year lease here. And when everything's done, we're gonna, we promise to clean it up, you know? Well, you know, that doesn't always happen. And, uh, and, you know, people are left with, people are left holding the bag and and, uh,
And and that's exactly what we're trying to account for is that
Yeah.
We're, we're, we're not intending that we ever want to or will have to utilize these, these factors. We, it's the last thing we want to do, we hope that the ones we have and anything in the future will be good partners, but we have to safeguard ourselves that, that, that something doesn't get put in and then they abandon it. And I, I can tell you that these, the, the companies do change hands fairly regularly, it's, it's, I'm not sure exactly how they're set up, but as a commodity, because I get, I get a lot of calls. I've got a number of calls that they say, I'm so and so and I'm, we're taking over from company X for project Y and I need to know the same details.
So are they regulated by the public, public utilities commission?
I'm honestly not sure how, how they're regulated, but they, they change hands pretty
I don't think they are.
These are private companies.
Yeah.
John and
Companies, they're putting in the system.
They're just a contractor.
They get the power to the
But they have to be close to the, to the transfer, they have to be in the right spot and et cetera, you know? I'm like, I was saying about, like, but there's some of the Stearns County ones, there, there really is very minimal environmental impact and with a lot of these companies and their plants or how they do this, a lot of them, uh, the, the impervious surface is really small. It's just the, the transfer station, it has one small, uh, platform of concrete. The rest of them are just, um, metal girders that are just kind of driven into the ground and then they can just be pulled out.
Yeah, there's, there's honestly, there's honestly not a heck of a lot to them.
No, right, and we even make them put, uh, put natural grasses and stuff like that.
I want to see some silo, sizable solar farms. Go out in east side of the river and go, drive out County Road Eight. There's some that are in and there's some that are going, a lot that are going in along County Road Eight, they're, they're right there. There's no screening, there's no nothing.
That's, it's Ben County, and that's a, a county issue there, that they're, they have different regulations, they're the same thing, so that's
The solar, the solars, they should, at twenty-five years, they're still operating. I mean, they, they still have power.
Yeah, they're, they're, it's kind of declining returns, but they, they're still getting like a, a pretty high percentage of their original power at that time.
As time goes on and gets to be fifteen, twenty years, these companies are probably gonna sell them to the farmers.
They're gonna try.
Because, you know, they're making money and everything else, but these people, they have teams that go out and maintain them, and they have to be up, I mean, they gotta be taken care of, cleaned, hooked up. I mean, you got gophers, you got everything else that, I mean, I know a gentleman that he goes all over the country getting these things fired up and he goes, yeah, they're great, but once it gets turned over to a local person or a farmer or whatever, for a couple of years or whatever it might work, but once something starts going bad, they're gonna go bad real fast. And the original bond, does that transfer from owner to owner? That's what I think we need to be watching is not necessarily the original person putting it in, but that that bond's still there at the end.
Yeah, I, I believe we have it set up and I'd, I'd have to go back and look, but I think it's set up to, to heirs or assignees or successors.
Another concern is, uh, these, these are mainly startup companies, is that correct?
I, some are, I don't know how, how, I mean, it's, it's a burgeoning industry, I mean, at least it was in the last several years.
But I mean, what I'm, what I'm, yeah, what I'm leading up to is, uh, uh, you know, it's not too hard to file bankruptcy and, and, uh, then, then who's responsible?
Well, and, and what I've noted is that, uh, we included a kind of an inflationary factor as well because five hundred thousand is a lot today.
Not gonna be so much.
It won't be five hundred thousand in twenty-five years and, you know, that, that could probably easily take out a, a, a smaller, like, smaller, like a one mega lot, like you saw at the Imholz that they put out there. That's probably, that's probably no problem with that, but
My immediate response to that comment about it being prohibited.
Yep.
Well, it is now, maybe.
Yeah, exactly, but I, I don't know, I've heard people say that it's, it doesn't, a five hundred thousand dollar bond doesn't cost five hundred thousand dollars to get.
No, it doesn't.
It's like insurance.
I, 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 assuming that's the truth, that's, I, I don't, I fail to see why that makes a project non-viable. It's, you're, you're, but you're providing us that guarantee, but you're not necessarily putting out the, out of your pocket the amount that we're requesting.
Commissioners, have any direction they'd like to take for pushing it forward to be changed possibly later? Or take Ken's advice and table it till next month? And it might be a crunch line to get it done by the end of February?
I, I'm okay with tabling it, if we bang out some more of these details.
What do we hope to, to accomplish by tabling it? I mean, we're going to get
As we come up with concrete changes, we're not gonna gain anything by tabling it.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. And we're going to be able to get, uh, you know, any more credible information, uh, between now and then?
Yeah, if there's specific recommendations you want to amend, or like, say, bumping up the wind turbine from fifty to a hundred and fifty, if if you're comfortable with that, that make, I can incorporate that.
We can change some of the language there.
Yeah, we're just pulling numbers out of the air too, you know?
Right.
I mean, we're not, we're not using that in any concrete fact.
See, that's what, you know, when it comes to some of this stuff, it's such new technology. So have any of us researched it, you know, like you say? Wh- what does a fifty foot wind tower do for you versus a hundred or a hundred and fifty feet? Wh- where's the sweet spot that would make it viable? I, I have no, no clue.
I mean, if it's on the top of the hill and, you know, it's fifty foot wind power, wind, wind turbine might do well.
But keep it, keep in mind, if we make it restrictive now, we can grant the ordinance or we can not variance in it
That's true.
To let it go higher if they have just for cause, and then that would be time to go back and change it that, hey, this guy proved that has to be
And, and I've never seen a request or any, any interest, no one so much as uttered the word of turbine. I, I was just trying to incorporate an allowance, like, if someone wants to put one in kind of for their own use, then, then we can factor that.
Miles, good luck, President.
I've, I've heard at a conference, I believe it was sometime back, that, you know, well, how, someone brought up, how come southern Minnesota gets so many wind, you know, wind farms and we don't see any up here and it's the patterns?
They have wind.
There's, yeah, that's, there's, there's not enough demand.
They're conducive, they have wind.
Go where the wind is, yeah.
But, but But the same thing applies, I mean, we don't know that there, there wouldn't necessarily be some new weird looking turbine that wouldn't be super efficient and all of a sudden makes it viable. That, that could happen, and it's
But ordinances are a living document, they can change.
They can, right, yep.
I think you're right.
Well, I would support this ordinance with the understanding that, and, and, you know, with, I don't know whether they want to make this in the form of a motion, but, uh, so let me go back. We know that, you know, you don't like to, or the staff doesn't like to, uh, once we get an ordinance done, it, 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 it's nice to have it in place and not have to re-review and review it all the time. But this is kind of a, uh, we're dealing with something that I think is a changing animal, that that could change quickly. And, uh, um, so, you know, I, I think, you know, your, your staff should be amenable to, um, reviewing this when it's necessary. And I guess the other thing, uh, it's just, you know, it's, you know, the, the idea that this is a beginning, that this is going to change. Doesn't necessarily have to, and it may not, but I mean, we can't, you know, say this is what it is and so I think, you know, as you were saying, be open, you know, if somebody comes up with a good idea and needs a variance, uh, be open to that. Uh, so, you know, I guess I would support, uh, submitting the, or accepting the ordinance as, as it's written with those ideas in mind. And I would make a motion to do that.
Okay, I'll second that.
We got a motion and a second to approve, all have favors, same way saying aye.
Aye.
All pose same sign.
I'll have to vote no on that, I just, I, I struggle with it too much. Pretty much downplaying.
Order one.
Thank you, everybody, I think that's, I think that's some good conversation, probably one of the best we've had for a long time. So I appreciate your input and I know we all have kind of differing opinions, but I just want to let you know I respect every one of them. So I, I appreciate your input and I know we all have kind of differing opinions, but I just want to let you know I respect every one of them and, you know, we're all coming from a a different space, so I appreciate that and
I don't mean to, to make offense either because I, you know
Well, certainly not.
No, don't, don't, don't worry, Bob, I, I don't take offense, I, I don't, I don't want a rubber stamp planning commission, I want there to be some, some discourse and, and
And discussion is good.
Yeah.
And I, there'll be more discussion on this and I think we'll come up with a good product.
Yeah, that's, that wasn't the intent.
Yep.
I appreciate all the work you did on it, John.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
That, that's something you gotta start from scratch and that's
Any other business?
Uh, no other business aside from happy holidays and merry Christmas and New Years and safe travels for any of you going anywhere.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that.
We got a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor sing with saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, meeting adjourned at eight oh one.